Councilmember Brightingam?
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Here.
Councilmember Tuha Wynn?
Here.
Councilmember Bowie?
Here.
Councilmember Kim Wynn?
Here.
Mayor Potem Klonfenstein?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. Can I ask Maria Stipe to leave us in the invocation and then Tuha Wynn to do the pledge of allegiance?
Sure, if everybody could please stand. Dear Lord, we ask that you be with us tonight as we seek to understand and embrace the needs of our community. We also humbly ask that you guide us to answer those needs and to do what is best for all of the citizens of Garden Grove. Amen.
Everybody put your hand over your heart, face the flag, and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with which Jesus Christ is our Lord.
Alrighty, presentations, we do have two items. First is a Community Spotlight in recognition of Garden Grove Police Captain Travis Whitman for 30 years of service.
This evening, the Garden Grove City Council is very pleased to recognize Police Captain Travis Whitman as he retires from the Garden Grove Police Department with 30 illustrious years of service. Captain Whitman joined the Garden Grove Police Department on May 24, 1989, as a reserve officer, becoming a full-time officer in 1990. He worked undercover for six years in narcotics enforcement during which he was cross-deputized as a task force officer with the DEA. In 2001, he was promoted to patrol sergeant, supervising and instructing officers in weapons and arrests, and is recognized as an expert in the use of force. Less than five years later, he became lieutenant during which he oversaw patrol, the professional standards division, and is serving as the department's public information officer. As a proven and respected leader, Travis was ascended to captain in 2011, leading the administrative services, operations, and support services bureaus. One of his most notable accomplishments was managing several police department Kalia accreditation processes. Kalia stands for the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies and is the gold standard of national accreditation for police agencies. Only 10% of the nation's police departments qualify for Kalia certification. And as one of the county's first law enforcement agencies to receive accreditation and be consistently reaccredited, Garden Grove Police Department recently received Kalia's prestigious meritorious accreditation with excellence award, thanks in large part to Captain Whitman. Throughout Captain Whitman's exemplary career, he has committed himself to being an engaged and supportive leader for the exceptional men and women of the Garden Grove Police Department and proudly served the community through his long-term membership with the Kiwanis Club of Garden Grove. On March 7, just last week, friends and colleagues expressed their sincere heartfelt appreciation and well wishes for Captain Whitman as he retired from the Garden Grove Police Department after 30 years of service. At this time, the Garden Grove City Council would like to present Captain Whitman with a crystal award to honor his three decades of meritorious service to the city and community of Garden Grove. The city wishes you, Travis, the very best on your very well-deserved retirement. Congratulations.
Thank you. A couple shots right here. One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three. Thank you. Well, I am truly humbled to be honored tonight for my service. Thirty years went by fast, and I can honestly say that it's been a remarkable and rewarding career. I'm a lucky man. I knew early in my life what I wanted to do, and Garden Grove gave me the opportunity, and I forever will be grateful for that. I came to the city because this is the one city in Orange County that would hire me under the age of 21. The day I got sworn in, I went to the property and evidence room to get my firearm, and the custodian issued me a rusty old revolver, six-shooter, and it looked like it may have done some time in a John Wayne Western. I mean, it was old. And he says, "Well, you can get yourself a fancy automatic, but you have to pay for it. All you need to do is just go to the chief's office, get a letter, and they'll let you take it home that day." So I went right to the gun store and went to the counter, picked out the one I wanted, and they said, "Son, we can't sell you this gun. You're not old enough." So disappointed, I left, came back an hour later, said, "Here's my badge, here's my ID, and here's my mom." So my mom was the registered owner of my gun for the first six years of my career. But as in most cases, successes are shared and are a team effort, and I wanted to take a moment and thank those that are most important to me. First, I want to thank my family for all the support they gave me. Despite the long hours, missed holidays, the family events, they were by my side the whole time, and I wouldn't have been able to make it without them. Next, I want to thank the council as well as the community for the incredible support that they gave the police department throughout my 30 years of career. Without your support, there's no chance for success. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve your community. And finally, I want to thank the men and women of the Garden Grove Police Department, both past and present. The friendships and memories will be everlasting, and it's been an absolute pleasure to work with each one of you. So as I move on to the next chapter in my life, I will continue to pray for the safety and the well-being of all law enforcement officers, but especially for my brothers and sisters here at Garden Grove. Thank you.
Congrats, Captain Whitman. Enjoy your retirement, and thanks to all the other guys for being here and support tonight. Okay, item 1B is a Community Spotlight in recognition of Sister City Association of Garden Grove Exchange Student Ambassadors who will soon be visiting Anyang, Republic of South Korea.
The Garden Grove City Council is pleased to acknowledge 10 outstanding local students selected as ambassadors to represent Garden Grove in the 30th Annual Sister City Exchange Program to Anyang, South Korea. So could all 10 of our students please come forward? You can kind of just stand along the front here. Since 1987, the Sister City Association of Garden Grove, a nonprofit corporation, has deepened the city's understanding and ties with the Republic of Korea. Fulfilling its mission to promote understanding of other cultures, the Sister City Association of Garden Grove started the student exchange program in 1989 for Garden Grove youth to experience Korean culture firsthand. This year, the Sister City Association of Garden Grove is celebrating 30 years of sponsoring 10 high school students from the Garden Grove Unified School District to travel to Anyang, South Korea. The students have a unique experience to see the country's beautiful sights, but more importantly, experience its warm hospitality. The students, along with the chaperones Amanda Pollock and Jacob Grant, will serve as Garden Grove's goodwill ambassadors during their 10-day stay. They will get to come back, so it's all good. During their visit, they will be staying with Korean families who have graciously opened their homes and hearts to host the students and chaperones. At this time, I'd like to give brief introductions of each of the students. Diana Giegos. Diana is a senior at Garden Grove High School. She hopes to major in nursing and anesthesiology at UCLA or Johns Hopkins University in Baltimore, Maryland. And Diana, can you just raise your hand so we know who is who? So, thank you. And then next, we have Andrew Hooen, senior at Pacifica High School. Andrew hopes to major in mechanical engineering or aerospace engineering at Cornell University, UCLA, UC San Diego, or Harvey Mudd College. So Andrew, can you raise your hand? Ah, there he is. People are so smart, and we need to know what somebody looks like that has all of these accomplishments. Surish Khan. Surish is a senior at Rancho Alameda's High School. She hopes to double major in business administration and public health at UCLA, UC Santa Barbara, or Wesleyan University. So Surish? Oh, okay, very good. And Brandy Nguyen? Okay, very good. Brandy is a senior at La Quinta High School. Brandy hopes to major in business administration for entrepreneurship or marketing at UC Irvine or Chapman University. Next, we have Sandra Nguyen. Sandra is a senior at Bolsa Grande High School. She hopes to major in business administration or history at UC Berkeley or UC Santa Barbara. And now Andrew? Andrew? There he is. Okay. A senior at La Quinta High School, Andrew hopes to major in computer engineering, computer science, or electrical engineering at UC Berkeley, UC Irvine, UC San Diego, or University of Southern California. Next, Vivian Tang. Very good. Vivian is a senior at La Quinta High School. She hopes to major in biology at UC Irvine, UCLA, or UC San Diego. Next, we have L Tran. L? Okay. L is a senior at Pacifica High School. L hopes to major in biomedical engineering at UC Irvine, UCLA, UC San Diego, or University of Pennsylvania. Emily Tran, next. Emily. Emily's a senior at Los Amigos High School. She hopes to major in nursing at UC Irvine, UCLA, or Cal State Long Beach. And last but not least, Alan Buin. Very good, Alan. Alan's a senior at Garden Grove High School. Alan hopes to major in computer science at UC Berkeley, UC Irvine, UC San Diego, Cal State Long Beach, or Cal Poly Pomona. I think all of you should be hearing soon from your schools. The city is proud to have such excellent diplomats representing us in Anyang. The mayor and city council would like to present each of you with a certificate of recognition and a filled City of Garden Grove bag to present to your host families on your behalf, actually on the city's behalf. On our behalf. We wish you a safe and memorable trip to South Korea.
You guys are going to have a blast. Go represent us, well. Would anybody like to say anything?
On behalf of the group? Is there too many black belts in the group?
Oh.
And Taekwon Do. Well, us 10, we're going to be going to Anyang, Korea from March 28 to April 6. It's a tedy journey in order to just foster the understanding of different cultures and basically establish relationships with other countries and make, well, to make it simple, really great friends with people from across the world, which we might not even know, but we want to establish that relationship in order to create a better connection between not only us and the people over there, but also the two cities as well.
On three, say Anyang. One, two, three. Cool. Ready? One, two, three. Got it. Thank you.
Get used to it, you're going to have a lot more of these photo ops.
Yep, yep.
Cool.
Thank you, Hannah, thank you, Jake, thank you, guys.
Yeah, have fun, you guys.
Alrighty, we'll move on to oral communications. We do have a couple cards, starting with Craig Durfee.
The Honorable Council and staff, I have several items that I've presented to you for your consumption. I emailed you the White House for veterans. My dad was a Marine. He taught me a lot of things. And I encourage you, if you have time, to see that there's something significant to our community in this issue, as I understand you have law enforcement veterans, and the program is to vocationally provide them. And according to the commission of Orange County, they've identified homeless as our veterans. And July 1, there are programs for education. I encourage the council to be looking into this issue a little more deeper. So you have the press release. At your discretion and your staff, see what you can do to carry this one full. I was just talking to the Honorable Counselor George. Richard Rawlings on the garage rehab for two sections, two hours, has guided a garage quarter million ADA veterans-compliant rehab garage education program. I think, George, I think that's cool. I'd like to suggest that, to look at that. The next thing is, I'd like to bring to your attention that I have a letter from the veterinarian, chief of Orange County. They agree with me. There are things we can do with your dog animal shelter if we hit the council and help bring calmness to your school. Your resource officers would understand there's a benefit to human nature and dogs. Third, I provided you a reference to a physician pediatric about the time and cyber interaction to the youth. If you have any loved ones or kids, they've identified three years ago. Your children report, I just did an investigation, and all the doctors have no clue about this. If your officer is going to go into a school setting, there are issues that we have called grab a cocaine for a smartphone. That's UK identification. Your state California, the Greater Grid News Magazine, is toxic, harmful, if not used carefully, okay? They undo the social connection. So if we're going to have school resource officers go into schools, they need to be equipped and not play the parents until we get it under control. Starting July 1, I'm told, SB 972 goes into effect, which is suicide prevention, a card and a hotline. I think we can do a lot. I told you about this issue. We lost a youth at 13 in Orange County, and no one paid attention to me. And we had further articles on Tuesday, and we had an expert talk about it. I've been talking about this for a long time. So it's up to the council and the city of our veterans who are committing suicide, and also our kids, and our firefighters, because your chief, Mr. Bowie, admitted to me. It's a fact. So we need to look at September as a month of suicide prevention. The things I suggest are simple. It's called community involvement, and the council and the staff to work towards awareness. Thank you.
Thank you, bud. DOIG Action Committee. There we go. Wow.
Hello, good evening. My name is Angelica Collin, and we are DOIG Action Committee. We are from DOIG intermediate. We are from Sex and Sex, and our representative is Kim Wynn. And today we come to talk about or bring awareness of the issue of homelessness in our community and our county. There is a reoccurring issue in our streets. It is also occupying our streets. All around us, cities have begun to address the issue of homelessness. This problem has only become to get bigger and bigger. There are currently 3,400 homeless people in Orange County.
In an attempt to help, many Orange County cities are planning to address this issue in the next upcoming years. According to an article by The Voice of the OC, Santana plans to place a 400-bed shelter with a new 700-bed facility. Santana currently has more than 600 beds for the homeless.
Anaheim has 325 beds, a 75-bed shelter, a 50-bed shelter, and a 200-bed shelter in a building owned by businessman Bell Teyormina. Currently in Midway City, there are 20 shelter beds, but there was a recent joint funding arrangement with Westminster and Huntington Beach.
In this arrangement, Midway City has planned to add 75 extra beds, 55 in one shelter, 20 in another nearby.
But what can Garden Grove do? Right now, there is only one, and I repeat, only one homeless shelter with 12 beds.
That shelter is the Thomas House Homeless Shelter. And according to their website, the Thomas House Homeless Shelter is to provide a safe, supportive environment for homeless families with children to help them remain together while also empowering them to become independent and self-sufficient.
This is wonderful, and we are grateful to have this support in our community. But we are here to ask, how can 12 beds benefit approximately 3,400 unsheltered homeless in Orange County?
City council can help us, because you have the power to build and fund a homeless shelter. Or you can help us give the homeless people important supplies that can help them, including blankets, food, clothes, and maybe even a job. These can all dramatically help all the people that don't have a roof over their heads.
City council, it may seem like it is impossible to completely erase homelessness and sometimes useless, but it takes patience and time to do so. People have a negative view on homeless people, and we want to change that. They are humans just like us and don't deserve to live on the streets. We hope you take our requests in consideration and help us change our community. Thank you for your time.
Good job.
Thank you guys so much for coming out. That was wonderful. You guys are all very intelligent speakers, so thanks for taking the time to put that together and to come out and address us. We appreciate it. And it's very serious issues that you guys are talking about and that we're working very hard on as a city to try and get on top of as well. So thank you very much. Yeah, come on up. Come on up, come on up right here.
He spoke too soon.
All right, that's all the cards I have. Anyone else wishing to speak at oral communications? Seeing none, we will close oral communications and recess to successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you like to co-roll?
Member Brightingam?
Here.
Member O'Neil?
Here.
Member Tuha Wynn?
Here.
Member Klonfenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Wynn?
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Here.
And Chair Jones?
Here. We did oral communications simultaneously with city council. We have consent items, just receive and follow the minutes, and approval of the warrants. Do I have a motion? Move the motion.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. Any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn back to city council. We go to consent items. It's recommended that items 3A through 3G be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item. Any pulls?
I would like to pull 3C.
Okay, pull 3C. And do I have a motion for the balance?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, item 3C regarding OCTAP as requested to be pulled by Councilmember Bowie.
Yes, I just would like to ask the Cesar Tony or maybe Scott clarify so much issue. Now, we know that the taxi services business is in some limbo at the moment because of the Uber and Lyft business model. And so the number of people who use taxi in our city is going down significantly and maybe even nationwide, and that's why it impact this fee that we have to pay to administer the taxi's operation as required by law. So my question is, at some point in the near future, if the taxi business is changing their model or maybe doesn't seem to do well in our city, can we pull out of this altogether so that we don't have to incur any cost for administering this program?
Yeah, I can answer that. So the answer to that is that we would need state legislation because the state is requiring cities to regulate taxi cabs. And what we're doing here is we're streamlining the regulations that are enforced through OCTAP, and we have been a member of OCTAP for many, many years. The reason we need to amend the agreement and we need to bring new regulations is because the state has changed the regulations. the state has changed the regulations that the city is required to enforce. And so what we're doing is updating the OCTAP regulations in order to bring them up to date with the new state regulations. But although we asked the state to regulate taxi the same way that Uber and Lyft are regulated, the state was not willing to do that. Instead, they changed the way that we are required to enforce these regulations, and OCTAP is going to continue to do that. But now we're going to have to contribute a little bit more financially. In the past, it has been, the OCTAP program has been self-funded through permit fees, but because the number of taxi cabs and taxi drivers have dwindled in Orange County, the revenue is not enough anymore, so the city is going to have to contribute some money from the general fund in order to continue with the program. And again, we can't really, we either bring it in-house and regulate it through city employee, or we contract with OCTAP to do it, which is, at this time, financially more cost-effective to do it regionally than it is to do it individually, as an individual city. So that's why we're bringing this to you.
And Councilman Bowie, if I could just tag onto those comments, we're actually really quite pleased with that the Orange County Transportation Authority has continued to run this program. If they weren't willing to do that, every city in Orange County would have to figure out their own taxi licensing program. We have actually one of the larger taxi cab companies here in Garden Grove, Yellow Cab. And so we originally estimated that if we had to go this alone and run this program, it would cost us, you know, significantly more than this. So the fact that we've got all 34 cities in Orange County on board, willing to help work with OCTA to fund this program, I think it'll work very well for us. And then, of course, as you indicated, we'll continue to monitor the usage of the number of cabs. Ride-sharing programs are changing, you know, by the day, and, you know, we'll certainly continue to monitor the program on a yearly basis, just like all the other cities in Orange County will.
Okay. I have no more questions. So I would like to make the motion to approve this.
Second. Is that a second? Second. Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All righty, that takes us on to public hearings. We just have one, item 4A.
This evening, we have a public hearing, item 4A. It's an adoption of a resolution, adopting a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for a proposed residential project located at 9861 11th Street, Garden Grove, and introduction and first reading of an ordinance approving PUD-010-2019, entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Approving Plan Unit Development Number PUD-010-2019 to amend the city's official zoning map to change the zoning of the property to residential plan unit development zoning, PUD-010-2019, with R3 multiple family residential base zoning. And Mr. Lee Moreno is here to provide the presentation.
Thank you. Seems weird standing up.
That's what I was saying. You're so applicant-like.
Yeah. Ooh, scary. Let's see. Ah, there we go. So the item for you tonight is to transmit a planning commission recommendation to City Council to approve the subject plan unit development request, changing the zoning of a 1-acre parcel from R3 multiple family residential to PUD-010-2019 to facilitate the construction of a 31-unit townhouse development, along with the adoption of a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Ah, there we go. The subject site is located on the north side of 11th Street between Carey Street and Booker Street. The site is currently developed with a 59-unit intermediate care facility for the developmentally disabled, which will cease operation by the end of May this year. On February 7, 2019, the planning commission approved site plan, a variance, and a tentative tract, along with the recommendation for City Council to approve and adopt an ordinance approving the planned unit development and a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring reporting program for the project. There were no speakers that came forward to speak for or against the project, and the project was approved by a 5-0 vote with one planning commissioner being absent. The project does consist of 31 two- and three-story townhouse development with attached two-car garages, along with 30 open parking spaces that are spread out throughout the development. Access to the project is via a two-way driveway from 11th Street. The project does include a total of 9,400 square feet of open space, which is 153 square feet over the code required minimums. Density for the project is 17.2 acre units per acre, which is below the 24 units per acre, which would be allowed by the zoning code, and the 32 units per acre that would be allowed under the city's general plan land use designation for the site. The requested PUD is a precise plan that will facilitate and permit the development of the subject townhouse project. A PUD is a precise plan adopted by City Council that provides the means for the regulations of buildings, structures, and uses of land in order to facilitate and implement the land uses that are before you. The PUD zoning designation establishes development standards and uses that are specific to a particular project, provided that the quality of the project achieved through the PUD is greater than what could be achieved through traditional zoning. Throughout the residential PUD and the flexibility in the site design it accommodates, the proposed project provides a greater quality development by utilizing certain modifications to traditional strict zoning standards, which include a reduced separation between habitable portions of the building, a reduced separation between habitable portions of the buildings to the open parking spaces, the encroachment of private open patios in the front yard setback, and allowing an additional powder room for the residential units. Such minor deviations have previously been approved for other residential projects within the city. The subject PUD would permit the development of the property in accordance with the approved site plan and tentative tract map approvals for the project, and would accommodate the development of the subject residential development that would be compatible with the existing neighborhood. In conjunction with the proposed project, the city, through an environmental consultant, prepared an initial study and mitigated negative declaration in accordance with CEQA, which is the California Equality, California Environmental Equality Act. And it analyzed the potential environmental impacts of the proposed residential townhouse project. In accordance with CEQA guidelines, the city made the mitigated negative deck available for public review and comment prior to the meeting. The MND concludes that the proposed project will have no or less than significant impact on all relevant environmental factors, provided specific mitigation measures are incorporated as per the mitigation monitoring reporting program. With that, staff would recommend that the city conduct a public hearing approving a resolution adopting a mitigated negative declaration mitigation monitoring program for the project, and introduce and conduct the first reading of an ordinance approving plan unit development number PUD-010-2019 to amend the city's official zoning map to change the zoning of the project site to residential plan unit development with R3 based zoning. That would conclude staff's report. We're here to answer any questions. We also have Renee, our environmental consultant, and Chad Brown, who is the applicant for the project.
Thanks, Lee. Any questions of staff at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one. Can you go back to the slide here?
Oh, yeah.
On the north elevation, you were talking about the infringement into that setback for the, how far is that setback?
Big encroach. I want to say they're about 10 feet, 10 feet away from the front. So what those are is those low patios. It's very similar to what Brandywine did at Century Village, or the Century.
So the setback itself is 10 feet, and we're encroaching 8 feet into that?
Oh, well, no, we're, it's about 10 feet from the property, so they're probably about 15, I mean, not 15, I'm sorry, 5.
Okay, so we still have ample room for mobility and wheelchairs and this kind of stuff?
Well, because that's on the public right-of-way. So there's a sidewalk, and there'll be landscaping. There will be path to travels from the sidewalk to the front doors. It's a way also to have the front of the units kind of engage with the street rather than turning the project all the way inward.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Okay, thanks, Lee. I do not have any cards. Is there anyone wishing to speak?
I just wanted to say, for my, working, I live on Celine Street. We're having intensity of people living in a more conditioned environment. Testers have that problem with the overstimulation of cars. So that looks a awesome project, and they want to be cautious, people double up on their margins. Market may be issue. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Councilmembers, any comments or motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Wonderful-looking project, looks very clean and straightforward in an area town that could use some revitalization in there, and so, thanks, and I will call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
And Mayor, just for the record, we need to read the title of the ordinance that was just introduced. It's an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Approving Plan Unit Development Number PUD 10-2019 to amend the city's official zoning map to change the zoning of the property to residential plan unit development zoning, PUD 10-2019, with R3 multiple family residential base zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we call to vote?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Congratulations, you've been approved.
I really want, if I may.
Please.
On the motion, or on the item that was just taken, my name is Chad Brown, Vice President of Planning and Development with Malia Homes. I do want to take the opportunity to thank Lee and his staff in coming up with, helping us to create a project that is meeting economically needs of what we need for the property, as well as a beautiful project that complies and provides the community benefits, both internally and externally with it. So I commend you for the staff that you have and the help that they are willing to go to, to work applicants to a positive project and a positive outcome like this. So thank you very much.
That's great. Thanks for that. Okay, takes us on to matters. Any matters from councilmembers going around the horn? George, what's that?
I have seven yes.
On this one? On the last vote?
On the public hearing item.
You thunk it.
Yes, I'm saying like it never popped up. I never actually.
Can we, should we call to vote again?
Four items. Public hearing item, 4A. We'll go ahead and do the vote.
Yeah.
No, everyone was absent.
Was it, seriously?
It's absent.
I'm showing, so we're having some technical difficulties, but the, we'll do a roll-call vote if you guys prefer.
Roll-call, yeah.
Okay, go for it. Councilmember Brightigum?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Tuha Wynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Klompenstein?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All righty then. That takes us on to matters. Any matters, George? Okay, John?
Just real quick, just want to let people know that in District 2, I've been reaching out to some of the business owners, seeing what their needs are from Garden Grove as far as, you know, economically, safety, public safety, things like that. So I've put a lot of them that had concerns in contact with city manager and the police department if they have any issues. And their sentiment, though, is that they're happy with what's going on, as far as the police department is very cooperative when they do come out to, let's say, a 7-Eleven or a Walmart, or, you know, all the, I've had very good comments from those business owners complimenting our department. So I like to hear that as a councilmember, because most of the time we get, it's mostly complaints. So it's nice to hear people say, hey, you guys are doing a good job. So I just wanted to make sure I express that. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Tuha?
I just want to say happy birthday to my baby Kai. He's, he's going to be six tomorrow, so happy birthday, boy.
Cool. Kim?
Have a couple, so please bear with me. First, I'd like to remind everyone to please support our Sisters City Association and sign up for the Strawberry Stomp on May 25. It's a 5K. You can sign up online now, so make sure to do so. Secondly, I want to give a huge shout-out to our Community Services Department for hosting archery classes at our gym. They applied for a grant, and fully grant-funded project. They got all the equipment, and they themselves teach the class to the young teens. I stopped by their last class, and although I was too old to participate, it looked really cool, and I was really jealous that there wasn't something like that when I was a kid. Also, shout-out to the Doig students that came today. I actually go to Doig once a year and judge their speech competition. I actually had the honor of doing that with our chief Schultz, who's passed. And really great to see these kids. Each of them pick a topic, and they do a quick, short speech. They do all their research. It's really great, sort of like what they did here today, but individually. I challenged them to pick a topic and come to our council meetings, so it was great to see them actually come through and do that. I know plenty of us at that age were not doing things like that, except I kind of was, so I'm not going to say that. I wasn't included in that. But also, wanted to bring up to staff, if we could look into doing some more outreach in apartment complexes regarding homebuyer programs. I actually had someone stop me on my way to council in my apartment complex, asking me about programs that Garden Grove has to offer. I forget sometimes, even though I'm part of that kind of community, that we don't outreach to those because they're kind of gated and it's not easy to access, but they're the forgotten group of Garden Grove and many other cities where they don't hear about all the resources and things that are happening. We usually tend to target single-family homes. So we could, specifically in District 5 and 6, where we have a lot of low income, a lot of multiple families living in homes or in multiple families living in apartments, so we could do some more outreach and engagement there. And lastly, happy birthday to my dad.
All right, I have a few things. First, I wanted to start by thanking the Garden Grove Police Department for this past weekend's efforts in District 5, near the convention center. We had a very large health and wellness expo. It has kind of exploded in popularity, and so we had quite a bit of activity in terms of cars parked illegally on one of the streets that is permitted, Uber drop-offs and so forth. So the PD really had a great effort over there, and it was just great to have their presence, and I know the neighbors in that general area really appreciated everything that they did. So thank you so much to them for that. And then I also, I want to urge the public, actually, on one of the items that we passed on the consent, it was the 2018 Annual Progress Report on the status of the general plan. That's a really great opportunity for you to kind of dive in and look at the projects and the plans that we have in our city. So if you have some free time, I really recommend you pulling that item for yourself and taking a look at it. A lot of times, people ask, what are you doing? What's going on in the city of Garden Grove? And this is a great opportunity to see where we've been and where we're headed. So I really recommend. That was 3B under consent tonight. Quickly, I have to do my due diligence with the vector control and remind you to dump and drain your standing water, or tip and toss is the new cool logo now. And as the weather warms up, it means the mosquito count will go up. So just be mindful of that. Check your screens, wear bug repellent. And finally, just because I really think it's important, the relationship between the city and our school district, I'm probably a little biased since I've got a little one in first grade, and GUSD, but we have the First Impressions Student Art Exhibit going on, starting tomorrow through Saturday, and that will kind of culminate into the Art in the Park Celebration that we're having within the city nearby here. So if you have an opportunity, go over and look at some fantastic art. We really have some incredible student artists within the district. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Pat. Okay. I'll jump on board that one, too, so I have some comments to make on the Art in the Park. So...
in first grade, G G U S D, but we have the First Impression Student Art Exhibit going on starting tomorrow through Saturday, and that will kind of culminate into the Art in the Park celebration that we're having within the city nearby here. So if you have an opportunity, go over and look at some fantastic art. We really have some incredible student artists within the district. That's all, thanks.
Thank you, Pat. Okay. I'll jump on board that one, too, so I have some comments to make on the Art in the Park. So this Saturday, from eleven AM to three PM in Village Green, is the inaugural Reimagine Garden Grove Art in the Park event hosted by City of Garden Grove in partnership with Garden Grove Unified School District. The free event will feature G G U S D's First Impression Student Art Gallery showcasing the artistic talents of K through twelfth-grade students. Other activities include a fairy garden pathway created by students from Garden Grove Elementary Schools, a fifty-foot-long Reimagine Art in the Park sign designed by art students from Garden Grove High Schools and intermediate schools, and a variety of do-it-yourself crafts curated by local artists and the Boys and Girls Clubs of Garden Grove. Attendees can also enjoy watching plein air art demonstrations from muralists at work. For more details, contact the city's website at GGCity.org. Thank you, Scott. Anything?
No questions, Mr. Mayor, or no comments.
Omar?
Just need to report our closed session, no reportable action.
Okay. Cool. And no other closed-session items, correct? We stand adjourned, then. Thank you very much. Have a good night, everyone.[1726.24]